Yeah, thank you, Joanne. Before I start with the general manager report, I would just like to remind everyone that tonight at midnight, polls do open for our board director selection ballot. So if you have signed up for email ballots, you should be getting something around 12:01. And I'd like to introduce, it looks like we've got all the candidates here, so I'd like to introduce them. I'm going to start with Julie Adman. She's in the audience there. And yeah, so Julie's running.
That's right.
Yeah, that's her. And also Donna Gruniger, who's sitting right behind her. And then we've got our incumbent, Don Taylor. And Joanne Ellison as well. So we thank you all for volunteering. It's not a fun job, but somebody's got to do it, and so I wish you all well. I feel really, really glad that we have four such strong candidates running this year. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and then I'll get into my report, is our coffee tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. We have Ken Merrick showing up from our Institute of Learning Retirement, and he will be talking about that group and what kind of classes they have available and everything. I hope everyone joins us. I think it's going to be a very interesting conversation, and hopefully we learn a lot about what they have to offer as a group here in Saddle Brook. From a general manager report, let's see. Golf has been overseeded. All the courses are overseeded. They have opened, and the annual memberships are going well. We're at 415 right now against a 450 budget, so things are looking well on the 31st of October. We hope that by the end of the year, we're at the budgetary number. September 2024, warmest September in history. Average temperature for the month was 3.8 degrees above normal, and that did have a slight negative impact on the early overseed establishment, but things look great out there. I looked at Saddle Brook and Tucson are looking wonderful. I haven't had a chance to look at Catalina, but things look really great in the golf department. They did, if you've been out there, then you know that we have some new scorecards and tee markers in use as the courses opened from overseed. And I did want to recognize Molly Fullerton. She's our assistant golf pro, and she is newly accepted Class A member of the LPGA. So good work. There's a lot of work that goes into that, a lot of testing, a lot of classes, and we really congratulate Molly on completing that. And big up counting events for the golf department. Veterans Day folds of honor. And where are you at, about 16,000? Where are you at, 15,000?
Just over 17,000.
17,000 for the 100-hole challenge that Molly and Jane will be doing. And then we also have the annual member open house that's a little bit later in the month, or early in the month, actually. So we're looking forward to hosting them and getting them in to see what kind of opportunities and what golf is doing this year. For F&amp;B, the happy hour menu change went over very, very well. They do like the handhelds downstairs, and I think that was a long time coming. We now offer those on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday nights, so that there's a little bit -- and of course, all the pizzas still offered, but along with all those items to give people a little bit larger selection. Iron Chef Thursday's been going pretty well. The first one actually sold out of all the food. Tonight, we're doing a Japanese spin on food. It's very different. It's a very different menu. It has some bats in it and some skulls made out of carrots and cucumbers, I believe it is. So please stop on by and take a look at what's being offered. I think it's going to be a fun night for Iron Chef. And let's see. Home resales. Obviously, we're way down for the year-to-date at the end of September, but I do have some good news about October. We have sold 14 homes, 14 homes, the month of October, so things are beginning to turn around. We do have a lot more opportunities with homes coming on the market, so we're kind of excited about that. The employee medical insurance, which the board just approved, is, we saw a 4% increase in our medical insurance costs. Property and liability insurance is out for bid, and we'll be doing a presentation to the community in December. And of course, everyone's working on the employee reviews right now, as it is the end of the year, and typically, that's the timing for that particular task. And encampment facilities, a lot of action going on there. Trellises were placed along the north wall of the clubhouse areas. The plantings are now complete. They look great, so we're really happy with how that's turned out. The underground review of the drainage areas is also completed. The Ridgeview roadwork is completed. The planters around the pool are being reviewed by cam and facilities, and they've come up with some interesting ideas. I believe they're going to go with planters and some metal artwork in those planters, because the problem is, when you get around the pool, one thing that the pool draws in along with flowers is a lot of bees. And people that are kind of relaxing on the lounge chairs really would like to stay away from the bees. So Patrick is working on that particular project along with the facilities team, so hopefully, we'll see that come to fruition pretty soon. Painting of the electrical boxes around the community. We did get the bids in, and we're going to start that work in the second week of December. That's coming out of the operating budget. They're going to specifically concentrate on the Ridgeview, Saddle Brook area, and the clubhouse area, and Acacia Hills. And they're in pretty poor condition, so want to get that project running. Shutdown from October 7th to 13th. We did, last month, I went over all the items that were supposed to be done, and I wanted to just check off the items that were done. We did resurface the Vermilion Room floor. We cleaned all the clubhouse windows. The tile and the carpets were cleaned. Pool restroom tile was cleaned. Both the main pool and lap pools were drained and refilled. They did restore the main pool deck. They've painted that, and it's got a brand-new finish on it. Looks very nice. This is a big one. Change out the condenser water pumps. We actually have a mechanical plant. It's small, but we have a mechanical plant that cools the building and heats the building for the clubhouse, and as such, it saves us quite a bit of money in electrical costs per year. But the condenser water pumps were the original back in 1990. We replaced those out. They've been rebuilt several times, but because of the age of the pumps, you couldn't get those pumps anymore, so we had to get new ones. Replace of the fan coil units above libraries complete. Rich finished the update of the software database. The evaporative cooler for the walk-in refrigerator in the Roadrunner grill was replaced. The Trust Tails is a project that's still in progress, probably will be finished sometime in November. They did hydrojet all the drains in the clubhouse, deep cleaned both the RRG and the Vista kitchens. And I think this is the last page. Repaired the cracked tile in the Agave and Vista kitchen, cleaned all tile behind the bar in the Agave. Spot painted several areas throughout the clubhouse, pricking them up to bar. They completed the carpet installation on the upper level of the clubhouse. They moved the hostess station in the vistas further forward to allow us to capture the people when they're walking in. We moved all the data and phone line connections for the hostess station as well. And there is one more page. Oh, I messed up. The one thing I did want to talk about, I guess I'll talk about it when we get to the projects. Let me do that. So that's, and thank you very much, John Reed. He was the captain of the boat, and he stirred it, what is it you always say? Straight and?
He was running hot, straight, and true.
There you go. And that's what he did. So thank you, John. We appreciate all that work that you did. Thank you. And I believe that takes us to Mike. He's going to talk about financially how we did in the month of September.
Thank you, Vivian. So looking at September, operating results, administration. So as Vivian mentioned, yeah, we're at 81 home resales year-to-date versus 94 budgeted. In the month, we only had five versus 10 and a half budgeted. But we are having a better October, so that's good news. Other general income, we're 183, almost $184,000, better than budget year-to-date, and that's mostly royalty income, followed by interest income, which are both considerably better than budget. Looking at the roads, we're finally, in the month of October, we've got invoices in, we've got cash outflows. So we've got $600,000 of road invoices that are going to be posting in October. So looking at that number now, we're 199,000 better than budget. That's just a timing issue. Actually, as we end the year, we're going to be about 200 worse than budget because the board approved additional work on Ridgeview. In general administration, we're 29,000 better than budget year-to-date. That's being driven mainly by labor. And the services, op services, that's mostly labor, and then followed by outside services. That number is going to come down considerably, though. There's a lot of work left in common area maintenance and facilities maintenance, project work that's going to be completed between now and the end of the year. And looking at the amenities, about 30, almost 34,000 worse than budget year-to-date. That's primarily being driven by the clubhouse, and that's insurance and utilities. Looking at golf. Looking good coming into the, you know, we'll be coming into the final month of the golf year on October. As of September, 79,000 better on annual fees. The daily fees are 14 worse than budget, but that's holding, and they actually were better on daily fees in the month, which is good news. Bottom line, course revenue is about 5,500 better than budget year-to-date, and 60, almost 63,000 better year-to-date, I'm sorry, 5,500 year-to-date in a month and 63,000 better year-to-date. Golf shop net sales positive in the month at $2,738, and year-to-date, they're at $46,595 better than budget, so looking good there. On the expense side, golf course maintenance is considerably better than budget. That's mainly being driven by labor, followed by supplies and chemicals. Golf operations, 5,753 better year-to-date. That's positive. Golf shop cost of sales is showing worse than budget, but in fact, on a year-to-date basis, at 27,000, that's being volume-driven. It's related to the sales. So they're at 62% of sales versus 64 budgeted. Questions on golf? Looking at food and beverage. So year-to-date, we're 40,000 worse than budget on gross sales. That's mainly being driven by food. Liquor and beer are both running better than budget, which is positive. Looking at other income, that's service charges that drive that, that 15,738, that's worse than budget. Cost of sales, year-to-date, it's right at 34% versus 34% budgeted. Labor costs ran high in the month at 79% versus 66 budgeted. Year-to-date, they're just slightly worse than budget, at 68% versus 67% budgeted. And looking at other expenses, 64,000 worse than budget year-to-date. It's mainly being driven by, mostly by general expenses, followed by variable expenses. And the variable is paper supplies, washing and linens, chemical, and credit card charges. And the main items in the general category are training and entertainment expenses. Questions on food and beverage? So bottom line, so as of the third, end of the third quarter, we had, in the month, we were $42,000 better than budget on net income. Year-to-date, we're at 655 better. Of course, as I mentioned, that's going to get eaten into as those roads expenses are hitting now. Looking at our cash position, we ended the month at 9.7, actually close to 9.8 million for all funds. And again, I've mentioned before, worth mentioning again, we have fully funded the replacement reserve for the budget of $2,077,000. All that money has been moved out of operations and into the replacement reserve account, and we've funded half the year of the capital improvement fund. We've moved home resale fees over of 176,000. We'll move the remainder of that in December. Questions on cash? Looking at completed projects for the month. In administration, we had an emergency purchase of a desktop computer at a cost of $1,626. And the portico lights, that's all done and paid for. It was approved at $8,048. It came in at $7,743. And looking at the golf course, the fairway top dressing project is now complete, and all the invoices have been paid. It was budgeted at 115,000, and final number came in at about 111, so it came in better than budget. Questions on the projects? No final projects in the capital improvement fund for September.
I guess it's my turn for the quarterly report. On advice of some members, some friends of mine across the way, I'm only going to point out the highlights of these numbers. The first thing to point out, excuse my voice, is we look at exterior paint and paint in person, and that's where there has been a dramatic down. Well, it was hot, so many people did not have their houses painted during that period of time, which led to our totals being down from 74 permits, 76 permits issued to 63 permits This is the income from our permits. And you'll notice that assessments went from $200 in 2023 to $700. That's because, because of the heat and rain, the monsoons, we had lots of weed issues, which led then to people being assessed for not taking care of their weeds. And if you looked around, that was a significant problem this year that we had to address So after we give a courtesy notice, we then may issue a notice of violation, and you can see that our violations, now this is not from year-to-year, this is from the second quarter to the third quarter of this year. And we issued far fewer violations, but we still have 13 active. And that would be due to timing of, the people have time to resolve the problem. If they haven't resolved the problem, then we do the NOV. And then finally, if they don't resolve the NOV, we do an assessment, and the assessments are slightly up again because of the heat and rain and the weed issue. Any questions from the board on this? This would be our information line, and our information line calls are virtually cut in half. And I wish I could tell you why. They're just not asking as many questions this year as they did last year. Our current activities. Our, big part of our job is to review and approve permits. We do home inspections for any resale that we have, and those are down, but now they're picking up. I personally had three given to me this week, so I know resales are up. And then we assist residents when it comes to compliance of the guidelines. We're constantly training our staff so we're consistent and fair as we interpret the rules. When you get new people onboard, even if they've been around for a year, they haven't run into that problem before, and then we have to do some little training for those We have communicator articles that come out monthly. And quickly, we, our meeting with HOA 2 has been going very well, and we talk about areas of common interest, and we share strategies. And coming from one of those meetings last, I think it was September, we came up with the idea to do the Dark Skies presentation. And they hosted it because they had the big space, and as it turned out, we had a wonderful turnout for that at the Desert View Theater on the 24th. Currently, we're talking about revisions for driveway coatings and the maintenance of driveways. That will be, we're going to take it a little easy on that, because we're getting to the season now where all those driveways may need recoating, it won't cure if you do an epoxy coating. So we're going to take it easy on that right now. We're looking at revisions on our lighting guidelines, and this is based on the county adjustments, not necessarily the Dark Sky presentation, but the county is changing their guidelines ever so slightly. And we're talking about watts versus lumens and making those adjustments. So we're looking at a more clear way to write our guidelines so people understand. We're not going to reduce the fact that we want the lights off at 10 o'clock. That will stay. We want our lights off at 10, but we're going to find ways to help people understand what an appropriate lighting light is. Unfortunately, almost all the homes that were built here, the lighting does not comply with current guidelines. You're supposed to have your fixture shielded on the top so no light goes up. If you look at your own lighting tonight, unless you've replaced it, it shines up as well as down, and we have to find a way to deal with that effectively. And finally, we're looking for new members. So if anybody in the audience is interested, there are applications at that men building, and we're looking for possible new members to join our team. Board, do you have any questions?
We have a consent item. Somebody, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the items under the consent agenda. Second.
Okay. So that's by consent, and now we move to projects. Projects, pardon? Oh. Is there, there's no, on the consent agenda, do we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the item was to approve Tim Mahanna to be a member of the property and roads committee for the remainder of the year.
Okay, we're going to discuss, this is John Reed. We're going to talk about some of the projects. The Agave dining and golf shop interior design. For the Agave dining, back when we approved the carpeting for the Vista area, also some tables and chairs were approved. We've decided on the table to put three counter-height stools in the Agave dining area, and we've had, we got some examples for some stools there to pick from. We're waiting for a sample to come in so we can actually agree that that's the one we want before we order the stools for the Agave area. The golf shop interior design's going really well. We obviously got the design from interior designers, and Mike and I are tag teaming this year to determine the cost of the different components of that renovation, and determining how much of that we can do internally, and the feasibility and the cost-effectiveness of those pieces of that renovation. And we'll be putting together some boards and whatnot to display to the residents in the pro shop so they can see exactly what we're trying to accomplish there. The Vista sound system is complete, working well. We had, that's a lot of people using it already. It's very easily functional for the, for both employees and the residents, from my hearing. I hope that goes well. Air handler 13 and 14, both of those were replaced and working great, along with the two condenser pumps in the central plant. Those are working great. Creative Arts and Wellness, the county did approve our site plan review. However, they elected to have us go forward to do a parking variance, and unfortunately, that's, you know, we was hoping that we could just move right on forward with it, but they want to do a parking variance. It's unfortunate and a little frustrating, but it is their protocols to follow their steps and procedures of how they want to do their approval process, so we're going to go ahead and go forward with that. I do have a meeting scheduled with the architectural engineering team, Zoom meeting tomorrow, to talk about the 30% drawings and getting that dialed in. I have that meeting with them tomorrow, and also I've submitted the application for the parking variance. Is waiting for the county to respond back with a review date for that. But overall, it's going well. It's a little slower than I like, but it is what it is. Roadwork, 24 roadwork is complete. Now we're on to the next phase for next year. Vista carpet, took a little longer, but we got it completed and is done, completed, and looks good, in my opinion. Common area utility vehicle is here, and the common area does have it, and it's working well for them. Trust tail caps installation, that's an ongoing project. It is a big project, very tedious, a lot of labor involved in that, but I'm convinced they will get it finished with my guidance and support. It's just a lot of access, accessibility, and safety measures we got to take to allow them access to different areas to get those completed. The, I already talked about the creative arts. As far as the construction drawings, we're not going to go forward with the construction drawings. We did get money to approve that until we get our variance approved from the county. So I think that's important that we get that variance approved first, and once we get that variance approved, I would like to have a town hall with the HOA to discuss everything we've planned thus far, and how we got there, and how we move forward as well. I think that'll go as planned as well, just hopefully, December timeframe, early next month, we should get a date from the county to do the parking variance, and in December, hopefully, we'll schedule a town hall with the residents. And the draining engineering services, they were out this week, and then probably today they'll finish up with the overhead flyover. Some of y'all may notice some of these placards on the, in the desert, and also some X's on the roads and stuff. They have to do that to do their pinpoint, to do reference points, to do the surveying of the Canyon Delra Wash and to include the golf course and the Bobcat area. They should have finished that flyover today, and then once we get confirmation that it's complete, we'll remove all those X's that they placed on the ground out there. That's about all I have.
Okay.
Mike, I got a question. In the general manager, general managers' report, there's an underground review of drainage areas completed. That's got nothing to do with this other thing that you're talking about?
To this. Has nothing to do with the underground. That was part of the, one of the shutdown projects was to do some additional underground scoping of our underground drainage areas. We did about 3,200 linear feet of underground pipes, kind of like we did a year and a half ago. We rechecked the pipe that we repaired on Ridgeview, and we'd also did some additional longer pipes. Our camera only go 300 feet. We did a couple of pipes that are on the golf course that were over 1,100 feet long, and all that looks good, no issues, no challenges there at all. I was really impressed with that, so all that drainage we checked looked good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
John, I have another question. This pertains to the creative arts and wellness. So what, I've heard two things, but what I heard you say today is that while we did approve $91,000 for construction drawings, that, that is not going forward until we have the variance.
That's correct. I don't want to spend any money on the construction drawings until we actually get a variance approval from the county. We do have money still left over from the original approval to work on what we have to date and to continue the drawings. Not a whole lot, but I think it's important that we don't proceed with any construction drawings until we actually do a variance approval from the county.
Yes.
Unless I'm given other directions to go different, a different approach to it.
No, I, where, from wherever, there's been confusion, and I just want to make sure that's clear, especially for residents.
That was actually in the approval that the board approved last month. We made it very clear that we wouldn't go forward until the parking variance was had, so.
Right, but for whatever reason, there's confusion on that, and I think it's obviously what I what I would expect from that standpoint. And also before the construction drawings, I think we do need to have that town hall, because I'd heard something else as well. So, you know, this is not a done floor plan or, you know, site plan at all.
Yeah, we're just proposing to the county, our vision of what we want to accomplish, and until they approve that, and obviously the HOA approves it, we won't move forward. The idea was to, hopefully, the county would approve us to move forward based just on, solely on a site plan review. However, they have different protocols. They put in place with the Pottentown County, their next step above a site plan would be this parking variance, if needed. And they determined a parking variance is required in this situation. Even though we already have a parking variance, they still want to review it again.
Sure. No, I, I do understand that. I think it's just the order of things that, you know, when people see renderings or what have you, it's not, it, it's not like a signed, sealed, delivered, that's what the building will be. So, thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
How many square feet is the existing arts and crafts building, and how many square feet is the new building going to be?
You know, I don't have that documentation right here and directly in front of me. If I can, I can get to, get you that answer exactly. I just hate to speak out of turn exactly what that square footage is. We're adding it roughly about 6,000 square feet to the building itself with our current proposed plan.
Is that, is that, is that, is that, is that?
Right now, I'm guessing right, right around probably 4,000. And that's a guess. Yeah.
Totally, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Lease package, I don't have any new information on that. We're still waiting for our three fairway mowers of the last remaining part of the lease. Bunker sand, all the sand is on site. Mike's going to try to get one or two bunkers more completed on Saddle Brook yet this year. And, and all the invoicing came in in October, so you should see that close out here shortly. Golf course improvements, all the on course, in play areas have been completed, are in use. Mike will be working on the nursery infrastructure over the winter and hope to get that grasped early, early to midsummer next year.
One more. Leave it down there, yeah. Leave it down there, because Joan's going to talk right after this. And again, the completed projects, the fairway top dressing was budgeted at 114, came in around 110, and it is completed. And when I say that, it's a useful life. This was the last year that it is going to hit the replacement reserve. Mike's team will be using operating budget to maintain the fairway top dressing going forward after this year. We did have an emergency purchase for an admin desktop, and that was $1,626. And most of our computer equipment lasts about five years, and your battery's low and low.
No, no.
And so, yeah, if you want to close that. And the last one is the clubhouse lighting. Yeah, thank you. And the budget was $8,048, and John brought it in at $7,743. Projected useful life is about seven years. There you go. And Jason's got us all hooked up. Thank you very much, Jason. So now we're, now we're going to talk about the most important thing here today, which is our new janitorial machine.
Again, it's John Reed again. Yeah, this is a, the feasibility of this here, the janitorial team has embraced, completely embraced the task of creating some efficiencies. We tried to look out for a piece of equipment that we could multitask and multi-use for these areas. We wanted something that would scrub and extract, as well have the functionality to, to be able to steam the floor as well effectively to clean. This machine here, you see, is, is the actual machine we're looking at, has a better cleaning process. It's, it has safety improvements, greatly reduces floor, floor drying time, and so we can turn the floor over faster and preventing any slips and falls on that area. And it is also easier to put back in the, in the back of the golf cart to take to the other remote buildings. It's a portable scrubber, extracting in one piece of equipment, steam cleaning functionality when needed, capable of cleaning and extracting up to 4,000 square feet, ease of use, detachable waste cleaning solution containers, and quick change scrubbing pads for sanitary cleaning applications. Because we would plan to use this for the restrooms and normal work areas, so you got to have different types of pads for that, those areas, so you can, it's like, kind of like you do a mop. The sourcing criteria, equipment had to come from a, with a company, the company has a good reputation, distribution chain is vast and accessible, at least one year warranty, and hard cleaning, hard cleaning products, uses our on hand cleaning products, and portable. The beneficial use areas, any surf, durability uses on any surface floor area that permits a minimal water usage, all restrooms, including golf course restrooms, back of house, back bar, high traffic areas, front of house, maintenance shops, pool deck, all porcelain, ceramic, or VCT type floors throughout the HOA. Got three different bids on this piece of equipment from Brady, Safety Express, and
Any questions?
First, before the questions, let's put the mouse. On the table. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the purchase of a portable floor scrubber at a cost of $4,665, including a 3% contingency funds to come from the capital improvement fund.
Second. Okay. Board discussion on this?
I have a question for John.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned warranty. Is it a one year warranty? Is it a longer warranty on the particular piece that we're going to be getting?
It comes with a one year warranty. There is options to, to purchase an extended warranty, but I didn't think the value was there to get an extended warranty on the piece of equipment.
And, and this piece of equipment is local service?
Yes.
Okay. Is it only, when you're steaming, is it just a water usage, or is there a chemical involved?
When you, when you're steaming, you use just water. Cleaning, you can use a cleaning solution or, or just water. But typically, you use a cleaning solution when you're just using the non-steam functionality.
Depending on the floor surface, to the kind of the surface you have?
Yes, sir. Ideally, for the Roadrunner Grill, we would use a steam function. But on, you know, the other floors, you know, the restrooms, we would obviously use a steam function, but like in the foyer and things like that there, depending on how soiled the floor is, we would just use a regular cleaning solution and/or the steam function as well.
Okay. Thank you.
John, is, are we contracting out the service now? How do we do this now?
Yes, typically, we, we try to clean the carpets and the floors twice a year, like during shutdown and things like that there. But this is more of a maintainer. It helps us maintain, we're not, get it soiled, because it, waiting six months sometimes to, to clean these floors as well as we can, because we did, finally cleaned the Roadrunner Grill this past time. We had to have a contractor come in and do that. This machine will help us maintain that and keep ahead of that, that process. We had several pieces of equipment demonstrated. This was one of the pieces of equipment we had demonstrated to us, because I wanted to see it actually work, instead of just watching videos. And they did bring this piece of equipment out here for us to look at it. And it did work really well.
Allow us to not contract out some of this work?
Say that again?
So this will allow us to not contract out some of this work?
As, as often, as often, yes.
Any resident questions or comments on this matter? Just, just, we lost, we do not have a clock on the screen, so Linda is going to keep it through the.
She can throw something at me when my time is up.
I know, but just for general purposes, she'll let you know when you're, she'll hold up a, a timer. And it's our policy to allow two minutes, two minutes for resident comments on each particular matter. Thank you.
I'm Shar Crossman, Unit 19, Lot 64. I'm glad to hear that this is going to be used in the golf course restrooms, because most of them do have a distinctive odor. And I'm not sure if it's coming from the floors, not necessarily being cleaned as thoroughly as they should. I know this will do a better job. Or if it's due to the wood rot that's starting to take place in the door jams, something you might want to look at. Thank
Thank you, Shar. Any other resident comment on this matter? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 2025 budget and administrative fees. So first of all, the fees, everything has remained the same as the prior year, except for the community service fee, as well as the home resale fee. We're increasing both by $180, so it's going to be $2,980 for the, for the CSF, and $2,980 for the home resale fee as well. Other fees on the listing have remained the same. If there are questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I'm going to just kind of scroll through these. Can you, can you use your microphone, please?
I'm just wondering if we should change bounce check to NSF fees.
Was this on the?
Just where they are.
Second page?
A wording change, right?
What do you want to change to?
Oh, bounced check fee. I think we can do that. What do you think, Viv? He wants to call it, he wants to call it NSF check fee, as opposed to bounce. So that's, yeah.
You know, we don't really get that many bounce checks.
Basically, what it is, is a lot of times residents will switch accounts. Yeah, so that's the main reason we get them. But yeah, thanks.
Other questions? Moving on. Tax services, rent. Okay. So looking at the budget, again, we have CS, we have a CSF increase of $180 to $2,980. We're looking at HOA departmental expenses on a cash basis. The board guidance was, to keep those at, at or under $4,815,600. And we're budgeted right at that, $4,815,600. Golf net income on a cash basis, the board guidance was $257,500. We're projecting that we'll come in a little better than that with the budget at $262,823. Food and beverage, on the cash basis, we were given board guidance for a net subsidy of $320,800, and we've budgeted at that net subsidy. Questions? Looking at the replacement reserve fund, our guidance for the minimum fund balance was $2,723,000. We will end the year, we're projecting that we'll end the year of 2025 with $3,685 in the replacement reserve fund. Capital improvement fund guidance was $200,000. And in the current budget, we're at $293,055. Little more detail on these, but in administration, you can see the bottom line, the $4,815,600 meets the board guidance. Golf. Food and beverage. Now looking at the replacement reserve roll forward, we're projecting that we will end the current year at $3,631,804. We're projecting that we will contribute community service fees of $242,600 to the reserve fund, and we're projecting interest of $112,700. So we're looking at estimated cash available of $5,787,104. We've got budgeted spending of $2,102,104, so we're projecting an estimated year end balance of $3,625,000. That's better than the 10-year projection, a little 198,000 better, and $962,000 better than the minimum balance target. Questions on the replacement reserve fund? Looking at the capital improvement fund, we're estimating a year end balance for 2024 at $1,487,355. Looking at the projected contributions, we're projecting that we will, we will contribute community service fees of $1,100,000, home resale fees of $357,600, and we're looking at interest of about $7,100. Looking at estimated cash available, I'm having trouble reading that number. Looking at estimated cash available of $2,853,55, and we've got budgeted spending of $2,560,000. So we're looking at a year end balance of $293,55, that's coming in better than the 10-year projection, as well as the minimum balance target. Questions?
Before we do board questions, let's put the motion on the table. Motion, please. I request a motion.
I move to approve the 2025 administrative fees and budget as presented.
Okay, before, I just want to say one thing. I want to thank Tom Simister for his, the work that he and the finance committee have done to get us to this place. So thank you, Tom. And Mike Tribler. Yes, and Mike Tribler, and the other members of the finance committee. I see John Davis back there. Who else from the finance committee is here? You deserve a round of applause. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, thank you. Now we're in board discussion. Resident questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous.
I think, Joanne, the, the information has been provided, the, lack of a better word, transparency in this whole process, I think has really been very, very forward thinking and amazing. And Mike, and your team, and Vivian, all the others, thank you very much for putting this all together and guiding the, the association forward.
Thank you.
One more round of applause. Next item on the agenda is Kathleen Sartoris has something on, that she wants to discuss with the board.
Yes, I want to discuss it with the board. And for anyone who listens to the recording and the residents that are here, this is just, just an idea. We're not voting on it. It's not, you know, fully baked. But it's something I've been mulling around over the last year. And it's to develop a resident expert database. So we have, like, every time I meet somebody new, we have an amazing amount of, of successful accomplishments, successful careers, and more importantly, the expertise of, wide expertise in this community. And we have, we can always use that, not, not just from a board perspective or a committee perspective, or that formalized. So the purpose of developing a resident expert database is to increase resident participation and those expert contributions to Saddle Brook One, board and management, but ultimately for the community. I would like to see that this enables better homeowner engagement, more informed, and expert, expert informed outcomes in the things that we do here, and maximize our investments. I think the better that we, you know, investigate, have expertise in projects and so on, hopefully, the better the outcome. And then hopefully, the better satisfaction of the revenue. and then hopefully the better satisfaction of the residents. So also, the rationale then is, is as I've already stated, but we have amazing residents with amazing backgrounds, and a lot of people are very accomplished and actually experts, you know, in the general field. And there are newer residents as well who may not be involved yet, or, or want to be involved and engaged, and this might be a, an easier way than to, you know, try to run for the board right away or something. There are some views on committees and the board and, and some involvement, and it's, it's not so much negative, it's just, sounds a little unappealing. When I talk to people and residents, I see a little bit of, wary, and then one of the big things is a time commitment. It's often pretty long, and, you know, people don't want to quit or give up. So we end up, right now, we have a lot of stagnation of membership in committees and other things that people volunteer for. I, I can certainly speak for that in, in some areas, and even though, you know, those people are probably experts and so on, there's more and different real-world experience. So somebody who's coming in right from, from that profession, for instance. We don't really have term limits right now, so some people I've talked to are like, well, that's already locked in. So, you know, we'd want to have people perhaps try it. We have less, less, here's one that I get a lot. Are there any snowbirds here? Okay, so a lot of snowbirds, and I've even had some, they can serve on some committees. And the more and more that people, I've worked globally, you know, whether it's technology or just learning how to interact that way, you know, they feel a bit of a bias, just because they're not physically here for part of the year. And also, people do have an inform, so there is a sheet to volunteer where you can express your interest, and that goes to the committee chair. So once again, though, that is, that is a little more formal to some people. There's not a lot of back and forth with that, those forms, and also unit reps. I can see unit reps. We have at least Donna here, who understands the unit rep's role, but maybe they want to use that communication that they have with, with residents and being a unit rep to volunteer some skills more in an ad hoc manner. So the proposal is this opt-in resident expert database. So this would serve the board, the committees, hopefully even management, to be able to say, you know what we need? This happened when I was working with the survey, the three-year survey. We really need somebody who's much better in analytics. How can we construct this survey so we have a backdoor of being able to slice and dice the information? We didn't have it on our committee, and so as more of an ad hoc style, somebody knows somebody, so we weren't pulling from something like this, but in essence, in a different world, if we have this, this could be a go-to, where somebody's always already said, hey, I'd like to contribute, but not in these formal ways. So it's advisory, maybe, or it's a true working capacity. So for instance, with the database, the person who is doing this actually helped develop our database and was hands-on for that part of the committee project. This is also was variable commitment, so you're not, I'm going to do this for a year, I have this monthly meeting, you know, whatever, whatever it is with some residents in terms of a, a more permanent commitment. So this would be very variable and, and duration defined. So what we would do, obviously, I already described this, so like an opt-in, so we would make sure, first of all, that the residents, I would like to have a three, three-question survey out there. Is there any interest, right? This, maybe not, if, when we look at the community as a whole, but I think it's a great idea for people to be able to commit something or to be involved, and it's a great idea for, I can speak for the board, or so that we have a lot more of diversity and background and a little bit of new energy, and maybe they become, you know, committee members and things like that. So this is a, would be transparent with the opt-in, so it would be very simple to be able to go there and get, get some information, and you might be called. If you're, you know, an artist and they want to do a mural, you may be called for that. It's not, it's not mandatory, but why not get the best of the best to do, to do our, our projects and contribute to the community? So I just want to present this idea and have people think about it. Thank you.
Now I, now I think, okay, I think we're at the point where we come...
We have, we have the opportunity to comment?
Oh, yes, please, please.
Well, looking at volunteerism on a wider, on a wider scale across the United States, for at least plus 20-plus years, volunteerism has been declining. There's several indications of that. PTAs are having more trouble getting parents involved with that. Church attendance is declining. Parents don't see their role in, you know, supporting that structure. And in homeowners' associations across the country, this was a frequent topic, and from the Community, Community Association Institute, its articles come out in that several times. So I would look at this as, as an opportunity. I agree, Kathleen, there's an opportunity here to delve into, you know, the lessons learned from other associations as to what works and how it doesn't work. And I'd also say, right here in-house, we have in Saddle Brook, one of the greatest success stories, I think, anywhere in the country, and that's Senior Village. I've been a volunteer in that for years. My wife's a volunteer, and I know several of you volunteer on that. But, you know, they, they've got over 400 volunteers, and I, membership, I can't keep up with it. I think it's maybe over 2,000, Donna? I don't know. But, you know, it's, and you say, well, how in the heck do they do that? Well, I think it's pretty simple, because when people vote and people make decisions, you know, the key question in their minds is, what's in it for me? Now, what's in it for me or you as a volunteer with Senior Village is that sense of satisfaction that you're neighbor, you're a neighbor helping neighbors. So I think there are going to be a lot of approaches to this. The database is one of them, but my thought, as I think about this for the, for the year and has, having been the person that was spearheading planning last year, or this year, I'm suggesting to the board that this be a priority for 2025. I mean, we're collectively in success for, as we did on developing a five-year plan, and let's just recreate that and go at volunteerism in this community to make all of our committees and boards and everything more effective. And because there's a lot of initiatives, there's a lot of action underway right now. Linda sends out a survey after people have moved here. The unit reps have an interest form that's filled out, and there's follow-up meetings. I know that my unit rep has contacted us several times over the eight-plus years we've been here about, do you have interest in committees and boards? And, you know, and I know that the committee chairs are actively recruiting, just word of mouth, just because like in the property and roads committee, they recruited Steve Cockey, moved here from Minneapolis, Minnesota, as the city manager, or the roads and property manager for the city of Minneapolis to get on with the Creative Arts and Wellness Center project. So there's a lot, a lot of things going on, and I think we need to look at, how can we pull that together and become more effective, you know, as we go forward into 2025?
Anybody else that wants to comment on the board? Thank you both. Thank you both. I think we've reached the point in our meeting. The point in our, there it is. Resident questions and comments. We do care. Your questions are very important, so please come to the mic. You can ask questions on any topic related to our HOA. Please state your name, last name, first name, unit, and lot number, and again, Linda will let you know when your time is reaching an end.
I'll, I'll start things off here. Again, it's Shar Crossman, 1964. I wish that was the year I was born, but it's not. I think we do a good job of using expertise in our community. Any of the large projects that have gone through have always had experts' advice given and received. As far as the committee comments and looking forward to wanting to be on committees, I do know that part of our policies for our committee chairs is that every one of those people is contacted by the committee chair. It's not ignored, it's not stuffed in a drawer. It is actually given to the chair. The chair contacts them. And lots of times, the chair will contact them, and the person will say, ooh, I didn't know I had to do all that. Or sometimes they'll say, ooh, that sounds like fun. Yeah, I'd love to join your group. So that's my opinion. I'm respectfully not sure that this database, I think it might take more time and effort than what actually comes out of it, but I could be wrong. That's only my opinion.
No, thanks, Shar. I appreciate that, and I do know that policy of the info form, if somebody is interested. Every, every committee chair is supposed to follow up with that. I think maybe, maybe this isn't going to solve the problem, but what I see is the same chairs, the same people on the committees year after year, and, you know, so maybe to your point, when they call, get called and they're like, oh, I didn't know what I was volunteering for. So perhaps, though, there's still talent there that, that we're missing, because I, I guess this would be something that, as Joe's saying, the, there are people that I know that would want to volunteer, but what, what are those barriers to volunteering for them? And so those are some of the things that, that I hear in the community. So if, hey, if, if it, if it doesn't do anything different, we still have somebody who's been chairing a committee for 25 years because no one else will, then maybe that, that is the case, but right now, that's on us. If we do something and look at it a different way, and there's, you know, there's no difference in results, then, you know, then that's on other people regardless, regarding whether they want to volunteer or not. So that's what, we have had this info form policy, but I don't see a lot of turnover.
Well, I think, Vivian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, don't we have a policy for chairs of three years? So the chairs are reviewed every three years if they choose to stay for the three years, and as far as the committee members, those are approved every year, so I hear what you're saying. Some situations where we've had chairs longer than the three years and committee members that are on it, I'm not sure how the database will address that issue. So I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying that regarding the committees and also regarding the board, there's three-year terms and a maximum of two years. So there's not a scenario of, related to the boards, of same board members, same board members. So just addressing the committee and the board terms, I think we do have a situation that's in place to address that.
So I would, I would disagree a little bit of that, because I've seen people, new people come and then go, but I'm personally on a committee where there literally are people who've been there over 20 years on that committee. And I understand the term limits per se, but I think this database is not about getting people to do the same thing. It's about different, being able to pluck certain expertise that can be lended to a committee or a project, like the example I gave in working on the survey. We didn't have somebody who was good at what we needed. So we found someone in the community for a short term. So in that case, if there's somebody, you know, who continues to be interested, but right now, the, the form is just to contact that you're interested, and you describe sort of how our committees run there, but we're missing out on expertise, in my opinion. Maybe, like I said to Shar, hey, if it doesn't, doesn't materialize to do anything, but right now, we've been doing it the same way for, in some cases, decades, and that includes chairs and, and committee members. And we do have, you know, people continue to serve on the board. Yeah, there's term limits there, but you can rerun.
Hello, my name is John Davis, Unit 12, Lot 34. I'm on a couple of committees. Full disclosure, I'm the husband to Kathleen. I, I really like the idea a lot, not because we're lacking expertise, but it's that there's a variety of expertise out there that we could be tapping into. Also, sometimes we may have one or two people who submit a form saying they want to be on a committee, but how great would it be if that committee chair could look into the database, for example, finance, and they find out that, oh my gosh, we have 12 former auditors and four, five former treasurers, and, well, let's just reach out to them and see if they're interested in, in joining it. It's an opportunity where we could actually go deeper into the expertise, and I think there are people that think, I would, I would like to get involved, but I don't know how, and I just have this inertia. But if this were an easier way, that they could just go online to the website, fill in their name, say what are their areas of interest and expertise, and say, I'm not committing to anything specifically, but I would entertain something if you were to call me. So I think it's a great idea. Oh, another, one more thing. An example of that would be, hey, are there any experts in the community at building databases and online interfaces? You could probably reach out to the community and have somebody develop this for us. Thank you.
Any other residents or would like to speak? Okay.